There's no prayer.
We could.
All right. Eddie? Y'all ready?
Feel it.
Y'all ready? Y'all ready, feel it? All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the council. Just would like to remind everyone, after our regular meeting, we'll get started with our first discussions on our fiscal budget coming up. So with that, we see that. Okay? Council will need a motion to suspend the rules.
I move.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed?
I'm opposed. Carrie, I'm opposed.
All right. Motion, Carrie, six to one. Tisdale, I'm sorry, five to one. Tisdale is in opposition. The clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're adding five S resolution to approve the lowest bid for one truck in an amount of forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Adding five two, resolution to approve the purchase of one truck in an amount of forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Adding five here, resolution of the addition submission of a twenty-twenty-two flood mitigation assistance swift current grant application to Nuneal. And to the team, adding a docket in an amount of eighty-five thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
I move the agenda as amended.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to renew the agenda as amended by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Yes, just a quick comment. I'm just in opposition because they're not emergency issues. This is standard operating procedure for me, by the way. I just have concerns when we add things that are of an emergency nature at the last minute for folks who may be following some of these issues. Yes, sir.
Well, I would, you know, Ed, I know if we would not do this, I think we'd be a chance to lose both of those vehicles and that's the timeliness of the stuff. So I'm well aware of the late ads and where it puts us as far as being out in front of the agenda. But this is something that, you know, if we don't do it, we'll lose it, I think. And the other, the late ad, it was just known, so we wanted to move forward that third item, too.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other discussion? Just like the ad, the agenda is not set until we approve the agenda as is or amended, but I do respect Councilman Tisdale's opinion. All in favor? Opposed, five to one. Mayor's report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone here to our meeting and that, you know, we're looking forward to moving forward with the, between now and October one with some wise budgets and follow-up. I think we've got some outstanding, I guess, financial conditions reports. We're glad to be where we are and I think it's a direct result of working together to create a budget that we can live with and exceed. And so that's something I'm happy to report. Other than that, that concludes my report, except for Ms. Hunt needs to give us a Mardi Gras update. Ms. Susan Hunt, thank you.
It's like you're, we sensed your presence.
Pick up the microphone. Pick up the microphone. That's good. You can walk around.
This one I can't hear.
Yeah.
This is one of my students.
Uh huh.
Can you hear me?
I can always hear.
Hey, my name is Susan. I'm here. Thanks for bearing help. It did affect with all of the threats and that's why it made it easier.
Amen.
I just want to always come to try and let you know Anna Harris is going to follow me and she's got a lot of information for you about the Mardi Gras museum. So just letting you know that we did some repairs inside and she probably prepared it to hang to be eternal, right? To replace the front sidewalk that was down there, the front sidewalk. But Kelly get all the floors there and he comes to the entry and Anna and Kelly and Lightning, I don't know, building and the structure and play, but they're full, full to go. They came back and they took that car. Went down, had some shelves in the concentration room, where we split the price with the Association. Now they have, we have shelves for all the strappers of what, of what we call, we pay our monthly rent, raise the water and we pay the rest. I want to thank y'all for all your support. Now, Anna Harris, who is our executive director, she's got exciting information. Anna Harris.
Thank you, Susan.
That's a case I'll call, okay? Excuse me. Thank you. We are married, had those four professors last year. Are you listening? Have initially written that out. Do you guys, we can handle the Mardi Gras here. It's not on you. I can say, um, this month we're opening a new exhibition. That's okay. That will feature the hundredth anniversary of the women's crew La Masque, which is the oldest private crew in Mississippi. And finally, we're very excited about a new exhibition that will be going up in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. It is the National Czech and Slavic Museum Exhibition called Magic and Mystery, and it will feature costumes from American Mardi Gras here and New Orleans Mobile, as well as Czech and Slovak Mardi Gras. So that's an exciting exhibition and we're happy that we can loan approximately ten costumes to that show. So again, thank you all for your continued support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very, very much. See, I told you we wouldn't talk.
Appreciate the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be back.
Mayor, is that it?
That does conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, just following back up with, you know, with the winged lot walkway. Have we set up anything?
We haven't said anything yet, but we will.
So I need to meet with you, because do you have to have a resolution or just?
No, we'll talk. We'll, you know, we've got some ideas and Mike has some ideas, too, and the family has some ideas.
And I know we had a seventeen million dollar bond. Are we trying to spend some of that money? On the seventeen million dollar bond that we're actually trying to do?
It was fourteen million. And we're, we're, have a plan and we're in the middle of that definition.
I was gonna make sure I put in twelve pickleball courts in there.
As I explained before, we had two-hundred thousand dollars allocated for the initial hundred-and-eighteen that was being designed and we're gonna stretch that to, with that two, so that two-hundred thousand is part of that.
Cause hundred and eighteen. I mean, that's, that's, what does it actually cost for twelve pickleball courts? Do you have an idea?
No, it's about a hundred thousand for, I think, three pickleball courts.
And we have enough room to set twelve, perhaps, down by Ferry.
We got enough place. There's enough space to put some more, just in that allocation. You know, the, the initial design, which has increased, used to be seventy-six thousand, now it's a hundred-and-eighteen thousand. The addition of some shade area, we're hopeful that, you know, Harrison County may help with, but we're probably, we may be able to put one court, stretch one court, but we really need to do it in three. But two-hundred thousand is allocated of that bond to move forward with that. We're trying to get ready to bid it.
There's enough space, yeah. Councilman Deming and I rode and kind of surveyed that out the last time and we figured that to the west, right? Robert, I think is where the footprint should go. We looked to the north, but I think just expanding it, coupled with the locker room bathrooms, the permanent bathrooms that were gonna be put up, I think that's the place to go. That's something we wanted to see happen, that's all. Yeah. That's the main, the main goal to get there. You gotta take care of senior citizens, you know? The ball field will take care of the youth and I've got to take care of the older people. You're in that group now. Senior citizen group. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Gaines?
All right. First, I'll say happy birthday to my mom yesterday. She made ninety-one. If I didn't see it, I'd be in trouble. Wanted to ask the mayor about AT&T got a couple of poles that are still in the ground in the city. And in particular, they're on Division Street. One of them is in front of the Mother Sallow Church. It looks like it's, it's a little, it's rattening out, starting to rot out, and I think it's getting ready to become a safety hazard. It's between Raynor Street and Lune Street. There are about five of them and they're on the south side. So if we can find out who we need to talk to, to start removing their poles, because they're not in use anymore. They're just there.
I understand. Tomorrow morning at ten, no, Friday morning at ten, I believe, we got it scheduled to, one of the main guys from AT&T in talking about some of the fiber optics. We'll be driving down, so we'll, we'll make that mention when we get here. So he's, you know, head of the construction part of the deal and we're gonna review some of the comments were made in, in deploying the fiber links that they've been doing. So I'll make a mention of that Friday morning, just ten o'clock meeting.
Yeah, and especially the, in the worst-case scenario, the one in front of the church, because that's the one that's, look like it's, um...
It's problems.
Not serviceable anymore.
Okay.
And other than that, I do need to speak with yourself and Peter later on about a few things and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming?
Mr. Mayor, I haven't had a chance to meet with the new director of engineering. If you could, can you get us a moment to speak with him regarding the drainage issues over at?
He's officially on board, you know, October one, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know he was coming on Friday on the, on the agenda last.
Right.
All right, so October one?
Right. Excuse me, August one.
August one. Okay, can we, can we find some time to talk about the drainage issues with Taylor Oaks in Lauren Falls? And then also that Club Moss Circle stuff we, we reviewed the other day?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Mr. Deming, you're not gonna dedicate the bathrooms for the pickleball courts? Mr. Deming, you're not gonna dedicate the bathrooms for the pickleball courts?
I got nothing.
Gave you the opportunity. All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, several things. First of all, I'd like to thank Carol Campbell. She's resigned from the tree committee. It's a voluntary position and comprised of a representative from each ward. And if there are those in Ward Five who are, who might be interested in serving in this position, it does require some work. They meet monthly, they go out to the site and examine trees, they formulate opinions to present to the planning commission, so it's not necessarily for the faint of heart. And you're paid the princely sum of zero. So having said all that, I want to note that Ms. Campbell served for six years, very passionate about protected trees, did an excellent job, large shoes to fill, but if there are folks out there in Ward Five that are interested, just get in touch with me. The next thing is the West Biloxi Library Air Conditioning, there were some repairs. I don't know if those repairs are underway or have they been completed?
The West Biloxi Library is, we signed an emergency, I think a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars to handle the, the air conditioner replacement and whatever the, yeah, that's underway. I cut a purchase order, I think.
Okay. So, but anyway, all right, so they still don't have?
Or is also, I think, is what we're looking at.
Okay. I talked with you, Mayor, earlier about looking at some funding with maybe a budget amendment, but we just got a lot of grass growing in sidewalks, in the gutters, and it'd be great if we had, if we could get some small mom and pop landscapers, perhaps, or, or just people to mow. Maybe they can make a few bucks and maybe we can get some of the grass cut. And I know this is, the effect is multiplied because we had a job fair and we, we need employees, particularly cutting, cutting grass, for example, but anything we can do is just, it's tough. Now, that, that leads me to another comment, and that is code enforcement is doing their job. They're citing people for having high grass and things of that nature. On the other hand, it's, it's hard for me to construct an argument when the city has properties or grass in the sidewalks or on their property that we mow once a month, but you have what, I don't know what kind of grass it is, I think it's referred to as antenna grass, grows up with the two things on top. Okay? That's what I heard he call, so that's a good description, but, but my point is that stuff grows at about an inch and three-quarters or two inches a day, so you could mow property once a week and still be cited. I'm not, I'm not knocking code enforcement, they're doing what they do. But we also have some individuals that need to cut property. I've spoken with you about that, so I just know we, we want to look good, particularly to visitors coming in on the main thoroughfares, but also in the neighborhoods that tend to, tend to be forgotten. Have we, are we looking at any timeline to maybe kick off an infrastructure project in the West Biloxi Master Plan, or we'll be talking about that later in budget?
That's right. Actually, all the capital projects inclusive of, you know, some of the things that we're gonna be teaming up, hopefully twenty-five percent instead of doing a fifty percent match and, you know, there's several projects, you know, in, in West Biloxi and part of that plan, to be part of it. Some of the four that we'll, we'll attack.
Okay. I know periodically we let a contract for somebody to re-stripe roads and center lines and intersections and in some parts of West Biloxi, those are really, really worrying. That's a difficult time driving sometimes at night or in heavy weather. And the other thing I noted is just on city web, website, on the city website, several different pages are outdated. I mean, the last posting was maybe two thousand and eighteen or nineteen, things like that. And I just know the only thing that's more frustrating than not having a webpage is having one that's not kept up to date. Street sweeping. I know we have a contract and we're, we're, we'll be voting on that contract, an amendment to that contract, dealing with a fuel adjustment, which I understand. And we regularly sweep some thoroughfares or periodically sweep some thoroughfares, the main thoroughfares, but I recall that, that we were told as council members a number of years ago, several years ago, that if we had a street or two or several that we wanted included, if they could fit them in the rotation, my observation would be that we probably have to have an, not an extended contract. We need to have a new contract which expands on the streets that they're sweeping, particularly in heavy wooded neighborhoods, because that ends up clogging drains and all that stuff, just an observation. The last, next to last thing that I have is out by Edgewater Park, CSX, God bless them. CXX has piled all these railroad ties and they've been there for several weeks and I know the neighbors in that, in Edgewater Park, they're about tired of seeing them. And I, I know the pace at which CSSX works, it's slower than paint drying, but anything we could do maybe to prod them into getting rid of some of those things would, would be appreciated. The last thing is, for those folks listening at home, the sound system sounds pretty good here, but sometimes when you watch it on video, it's horrible. And I know we're, we're looking at fixing the issues. It may require a budget amendment, but I know that for the folks at home, it, it's sometimes hard to follow and sometimes here we've had these issues. That's all. I just wanted to make that observation. Thank you. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Barrett?
Just a couple of things. One, Airport Road, we repaved it a few months ago and several of the residents have called. It's dark at night, can't, there's no lines on the road. If we could get that straight, I'm sure it's cured by now. Secondly, and I know we've done this multiple times in the past, but whenever we redid the, our HCUA redid the contract with Pelican Waste on the debris pickup, they only pick up a certain amount each time at, at a house. If we could get that put in the, the B news and the, the mellor that goes out again and then share that, and then, you know, make that, whatever those dimensions or whatever the, however many cubic yards or whatever they pick up each time, so that we can, there's a lot of misunderstanding about that. People will take out a whole forest and put it out by the road and expect it to be gone on the next day and, and it doesn't work like that.
There's a limit to cubic yardage and it's about the size of a pickup.
Yeah, so if we can, if we can get that put in there again, just to, to make everyone aware of that. And then thirdly, I'd just like to say thanks to Public Works. I gave a big, long list of things that needed to be done in Ward Seven about a month, a month and a half ago, and they have knocked out a large portion of those already. So I'd like to say thanks to Billy Ray, Mike, and their team for, for getting on that list. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Deming had a comment he wants to make?
I'm sorry, I just didn't see Ms. Bell was in the back of the room. Ms. Bell, if you could, just a reminder, give me an update on the coverings at the dog park, the, replacing those, the shade mechanisms. And Billy Ray, if, if we could, we talked about doing the concrete where the water is, can we add some concrete in the entryway from where the cars park, just to a short stretch into where the grass begins for the, at our park? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Mr. Lawrence?
Failed to mention earlier, of, of, Mayor, they have the judges convention down here from all over the state. Be at the Court Center. I don't know how many judges, do you know?
Jay Peak, Sherry.
Of chief. They're all down here in, in Biloxi, having that convention down there. Kind of talked to a couple of them yesterday. I just wondered if, how many, you knew that was down there? How many's in the hotel? Kenny? Y'all got any?
Yeah.
See? Okay. I mean, that's, that's another good thing for the city of Biloxi. Where are you having the events at?
At the Civic Center.
Okay. I probably need to know, because I thought that was pretty good, they're down in Biloxi, that's where you want them to be. And on our workshop, we had to hire people. How'd we do?
Do you like to work, yeah.
Yeah, the workshop, you had to.
Well, I left the chief talk, but we're very successful, both of them, as far as the success of the Wednesday and the Saturday event.
Yeah, it was, it was very successful, especially for the police department. I'm not sure about, about the other departments, but it was a good many people that came in that I saw them going to the other departments. A lot of them were able to fill out their application right there before they left, so we had quite a few of those. I know some of the ones that came on, for dispatch, that came on Wednesday have already taken their type and test. They took that before Friday. So it was, it was a big success, I think, for all departments, but I know it was a big success for the fire department and the police department.
We do have another one of those saying a few months?
Possibly can, you know, again, what, you know, let's see how it successfully is and what, you know, what we can bring to the table as far as PD and, and the whole gamut and what we need to do for next year. But this year, in talk with, with Councilman Tisdale and, and some of the things we're planning on doing. And Billy Ray, with regard to, we put, I think, ten additional people for keeping Biloxi clean in, in Public Works, and about ten new positions in Parks and Rec, and about fifteen. Now, we're already, you know, ten months through the year, but in order to step up, convert some of that excess budget, so we can spend it in the next two or three months, instead of just having it stuck out there to increase, you know, the grounds care, the striping, some of those things, convert it into contractual services that we can get and implement as best as we can. But, you know, the, the long-term solution is get our folks up to the levels that they need to be.
And we're also, we, we talked with Kiesler about having one out at Kiesler.
Yeah.
So that's coming up in the near future.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, I know, definitely. We gotta fill our staff in the police department, fire department, public works, all of them, you know, we're short in every one of them. And we always need extra people. We don't need anybody else in City Hall. We need more people working on the streets. And we're policemen, for sure, on the street.
We recognize that last, at the last budget year, we put, you know, those numbers of people specifically to address, you know, the need to be clean, to need to be safe, to need to be, you know, timely in a lot of things. Just, you know, the way this last year has rolled out, you know, everybody's, it's not the right market to, to employ people, it seems, at this point in time, but we're trying.
One last thing I wanted to bring up, last, two weeks ago, we voted in on McDonald's. And once telling me to do this, you never hear anything about it. That's one of the few times I got phone calls stating, why did y'all pass that, when it didn't meet unconditional uses? I said, well, you know, I said, we, I put it on the table to deny it, and Deming didn't move it to pass it, and they passed it. I said, you know, that's how it works in the council. And they said, it didn't meet any conditional uses. You, you voting against your own laws. I said, well, you need to talk to Demings and Dixies, they didn't want to move it that way. But I mean, I'm just saying, it's very rarely you ever get phone calls on something once it's done. So, anyway, just to let you know that, Robert. They paid attention, the TV get you.
Thank y'all. In my report, a couple of things, I want to thank Sherry Bell, Director Bell, working hard on some of the tennis court policies and procedures revisions. I think we're making progress out there. I'm hearing some good comments from the people that use the tennis courts and I think we'll continue to move in the right direction out there, so thank you for that. Also, I want to, once again, thank Chief Miller, Chief Geiser, Director Creel, and Peter Abide for, for the meeting that we held with Hinge in Place and Pops Ferry Landing. I, I think we communicated effectively in that meeting. Councilman Tisdale attended because he has some similarities in his ward with some issues, but I, I think we communicated effectively, had somewhat of an understanding moving to the center. And I look forward as we move toward resolving some of those issues and, and making it better in, in that area. On the issue of sidewalks and grass and all that kind of stuff, I just want to add to what Mr. Tisdale said. Of course, I'm in the tourism industry and I got people that walk in our hotels that walk along our sidewalks. There are some areas that sometimes we can't get to and that's unfortunate. I know we want to and we want Biloxi to look as beautiful as possible. I, I will say this, once I got that feedback, I reported it, there was a quick response, particularly in front of the Doubletree Hotel and going along to the visitor center, that was cleaned up fairly quickly. Of course, we got to make sure we pay attention to, you know, the, the cracks in the sidewalk that we're using Roundup and everything, so it doesn't grow up in between those as well. And that'll conclude my report today. We'll move on to the public agenda. This is citizen comments section. We got a total of forty-five minutes allotted. When you're called upon, please come up to the front, take your seat, speak clearly into the microphone, write your name and address on the sheet that's provided, and if you will state your name and address clearly for the clerk to record. So we'll start on this side of the room, my left, your right. Anyone would like to come up and say anything, raise your hand? Yes, sir. You got three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name's Gilbert Ramsey. Follow Me LLC, international market. I'm here to introduce a state market right now. Coastal One Initiative, collaboration outreach introduction with an L3C Corporation initiative with legislature. Sponsorship with Civic Center, with Mississippi Development Authority, or Mississippi Development Authority with the Coliseum, or the Civic Center with City Biloxi. Sponsorship. Is Veteran Health Administration, INET, Greenhouse Initiative, Human Center Design. What that introduces, education, recreation, employment opportunities with Boys and Girls Club, Hall of Fame Innovation and STEM Program, with Mississippi Development Rehabilitation Services, Business and Workforce Development Included. With Fishing Wildlife Federation Parks, Assistive Tourism Outreach, with Twelve Casinos Sponsorship, Blue Economy Quality of Life Outreach. What we're doing is introducing more opportunities for loved ones and caretakers. What we're doing is introducing more opportunities for loved ones and caretakers, amenities we're talking about. We're talking about outreach capabilities to incorporate appropriately in our community and throughout our state. I've looked at this appropriately with Boston Magazine two-hundredth, two-hundredth birthday, and within that magazine, it introduces all parks throughout the state. I reached out to Federal Coordinator to, to the Federal Parks Recreation, and they assisted me to develop a program to accommodate these people, meaning senior citizens disabled community. I'm going to Ms. Page and introduce this appropriately. I'm going to introduce this with Mississippi Development Authority sponsorship, and I'm asking you to sponsor me to do an outreach at Child Civic Center for the Boys and Girls Club introduction. I'm going to help them incorporate a workforce development, um, Mississippi Development Rehabilitation Service as well, Mike Slater. So I have this associated appropriately to make sure it's implemented appropriately, and I've been told Mr. Foflo has the only capabilities to assist me with this initiative. So I'm telling this for a reason. I'm a military veterans outreach specialist, recognized internationally. I have this opportunity with World Health Organization, Gate Community, and USAID. They're all waiting on me. If you don't know who that is, look into it. World He- World Bank in Atlanta, they all know me. Intellectual Properties, Ms. Kathy Vadel, U.S. Chamber knows me, Gino Romano knows me. Please step up, ladies and gentlemen. I have this for all of us. I'm going to do a movie of Robin Roberts about my mother. I have this, she's buried in National Cemetery. I love you, and y'all blessed day.
Thank you. Anyone else, my left, your right?
I'm Wayne Hingen. I'm an attorney in Biloxi, nine-seven-nine Howard Avenue is where my offices are. I represent the Mississippi Drug and Alcohol Treatment Center. Uh, they're on Reese Bergeron, right off Highway sixty-seven. Uh, they are bringing, uh, before you their application for a zoning change from RE to NB with conditional use. Uh, it's on your agenda, might be the first item, I think. This is a two-point-seven acre tract of land formerly used by a church. It was vacant when it was purchased by the center. Um, this is going to be for an expansion. They need more office space, they need dormitory room. Um, it meets the criteria, there's a change in the character, not only with Highway sixty-seven expanding a few years back, but with the CB zones in and around that area to the north and to the west, as well as the existing center, um, and, and its operation. Public need is evident with the success of the six cen- center that they already have and the fact that they need to expand. The operation will be identical. Uh, the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of recommending approval. Uh, all indications are that, uh, this has been a very outstanding operation, uh, since two thousand eighteen, actually. Um, it's a significant benefit to the city. Uh, I know the, the chief has been called on a couple of times with regard to this, some years back when they first started, and it's significant for the city of Biloxi itself, so we ask for your vote. I will remain here for any questions you might have while it's discussed.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Your right? Anyone on my right? Your left?
My name is Colleen Baggett Tucker. I'm a nineteen-seventy-one graduate of Biloxi High School. I'm here today as an advocate for children. While donating a considerable number of books to Margaret Sherry Library, I saw children's books on transgender. I was shocked, not knowing this was on our coast. I went to all the libraries in Gulfport and Biloxi and saw the same things. I'm not here to disparage anyone. An adult can do what they want to. I'm opposed to this kind of indoctrination of children. I do not believe they realize what they are doing at all unless they're coached. I also read that parents sometimes are not notified and the children are told not to tell their parents. In the meantime, they can be injected with hormones or testosterone. A child simply does not have the capacity to change their sexual identity. What little girl, little boy hasn't felt anxious about themselves? That is what life and friendships and growing up is all about, not this radical indoctrination of children. I respectfully ask that those books of this nature be removed. There are other people to think about, this is not all about a certain group. We are here also. This is not a fad. This is eternal and cannot be undone. Why would anyone want to do this to a children? This is not only wrong, it is an abomination before God. Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Blair Bradley, I'm the pastor of the Covenant of Peace Church, and I understand the argument of the separation of church and state, but I'm not here this, today to talk about the separation of church and state. Because while this secular government is separated from the church, it is not separated from God. And everybody that's in government will answer God for what they do and why they do it. That is eternal. I'm here today because there's a horrible thing going on on our coast and in your city that you need to know about. And that horror is real, and it's targeting young, immature, and impressionable children. I'm talking about grade school children. In his wisdom and by his power and to his glory, God uniquely made them male and female on purpose, and God gave parents the ability to train their children and teach their children and raise their children. Because we don't think children are mature enough to make wise decisions about many things. That's why they can't enter into contracts, that's why they can't buy a car, that's why they can't buy real estate. They're not mature enough to make lifelong decisions, especially financial decisions, especially decisions affecting their body and their emotions. So we pass laws to, to prevent that. Evil men who try to use children sexually are charged under a statute called statutory rape or pedophilia, and it doesn't matter whether the child was in agreement with it or not, because we, as a society, have said children are not able to make a decision like that. And so we arrest those people, and we don't buy their argument that because a man has an affinity for a child, that he should, he should be able to engage in that in a free society. We label that act of perversion as evil, and we stop it, and we arrest people that are doing it, and we put them in jail. So you can understand my shock when I came aware in the Harrison County library system that they're targeting children. There's no law that says they should do this. They've done it voluntarily, and they're promoting books that talk about the joy and the wonder of transforming their sex through hormones and through mutilation of their bodies with surgeries. But they can't change their sex, and they can't because nature and biology says they can't. And so they're butchered, and many of these people, as they grow older, are, are horrified at what they've done when they were immature. But grownups stood by silently while they did it. Then the library went from bad to worse, and they started promoting books that talk about how wonderful this is. And I'm asking you, as, as magistrates that I respect and honor, the Bible tells me to honor the government of the city. And I'm asking you to pull these books and allow for books to be had in the library that talk about the truth of what is happening.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. You had your hand raised?
Many of you in this room know me. I am also a public servant.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Well, my name is E.W. Suarez, and I live in Ward Three.
And your address is?
I would prefer not to state my address currently. My grandmother worked for three mayors of Biloxi. My mother has worked for the city of Biloxi for thirty years. I am one of the abominations that these concerned citizens are speaking about. I have been an LGBT person as long as I can remember. I have been this way my entire life. And what is disgusting to me is that I am being relegated by these concerned citizens as a monster. I understand their concerns. I have been inundated by heterosexual television, literature, and movies my entire life. I am forty years old, and guess what? Mr. Guines, Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Newman, Mr. Deming, Mr. Glavine, Mr. Tisdale, and Mr. Barrett, and Mayor Gillich, guess what? It did not take. Media does not disclose your sexuality, it does not entune you to be a certain way. If this did work, I would be married and miserable with children. But unfortunately, I am alone. I am three hundred pounds of bad news, and I am also Miss Gulf Pride twenty-eighteen. I am Estelle Suarez, I am a public servant, and I love my city. I have voted in every election, and I will vote in every election to come to make sure that this kind of ideology and rhetoric, because it is rhetoric, does not happen in my city. I will go to my grave until my ashes are set free in the Gulf, fighting for who I am and my brethren in this community. And if anybody tries to stop me, I will claw and nail my way to the top. I appreciate what they are trying to do, but it is a failure. Every person that has ever damaged me was a heterosexual male, not a gay person.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Your left?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, I'm all aware of the personnel problems that everybody's having, and I know the city's, it's not, not unique to it, but as I heard...
Can you state your name and your address, please?
633 Water Street.
Thank you.
As I heard, y'all trying to clean up the city and the major thoroughfare, Highway Ninety, and you've done so on this, from the Lighthouse to, to Beau Rivage. Well, in between the two premier casinos and the casino rows, you have East Beach Biloxi, which we decided to cover with a boardwalk. Fine, okay? But all of a sudden, the lease terms came in. A non-native South American bird, I know we don't have any control over that, an autonomous society, but the grass has grown up. On my morning walks, I'm ashamed, I'm embarrassed by the situation and the way the beach is and that walkway is. The contract, the contractor has destroyed the, the sidewalk that was there next to the north side of the seawall with the, with the tracks, with the metal tracks. The sign that the city of Biloxi posted is peeled off, all you see is a four-by-eight piece of plywood. The sign's not visible anymore. So, in doing so, I would, I would appreciate if y'all take your blinders off, open your eyes, see the beauty in Biloxi. The sand beach crew from Harrison County can't even clean the beach because of the lease terms. You know what's down there? Birds and homeless. It's a, it's embarrassing. And as a native Biloxian and downtown resident, I would expect y'all to take some action on this, regardless of the personnel problems. Everybody's got them, but they're still open for business, just like the city of Biloxi should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else?
My name's Barbara Chaploski. Probably the oldest one here. Not a public speaker, but I want to say how proud I am to belong, to live in Biloxi. Uh, I admire the work that you do, uh, in firing to keep us safe. I just want to state that I'm a Christian, this used to be a Christian nation. We all have to face God. I walk in love, I deal with the own, my own failures. The lust of the flesh can be money, it can be food, it can be sex. I'm here to speak for the children, for our society, for your own individual soul. God is not mocked, God is real. We're all going to face Him one day, and I just plead with you to pray for your own families, for your own children, for your own grandchildren, to, to see how far we have degenerated. Uh, in the, when, when they took prayer out of school, they legislated against God. Grove versus Wade legislated against God. A society is in trouble when you legislate against God. And I don't know what you can do, I don't know what I can do, but we need to protect the children. God bless you all.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone in the back of the room?
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Chrisler Ruskey. I'm the director of the Harrison County Library System, and I want to acknowledge the comments of the concerned citizens earlier.
And your address, ma'am?
Oh, um, my office address is one-two-one-three-five Old Highway Forty-Nine in Gulfport. I would like you and them to know that we have a process, if citizens are, have concerns about books, we have a process that they can avail themselves of. We try to serve all of our citizens in the county, we're a public library, we aren't a school library, so we depend on parents to make the choices for their children. However, as I mentioned, there are sometimes concerns from the public, and we want the public to know that they can file a, we call it a request for reconsideration, and we take those very seriously. We, we have a process because we have a, we have degree librarians who select materials, so if there's any, any perhaps instance of what might be censorship, we want to take that very carefully and very slowly and evaluate that in, according to our policy. And those are publicly available on our website. So I just want to let the folks know that I have not received such a, such a, a request, but we will certainly look at any requests that we do receive and take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I miss anybody? Yes. Anyone else? Did I miss anybody? Yes.
My name is David Vincent. I live at 231 Oakwood Drive in Gulfport, Mississippi. I'm the President of the Harrison County Library Board. And we have not received any formal thing with the board. This is the first time our five-member board has not heard about this complaint. So I want you to know that we will discuss it at our board meeting coming up Monday. Our board meeting is open to everyone. But this is something that the board, these people have not come to the board at all. This is the first time that I have heard about it. So I just want to go on record that everyone knows that this has not been brought to the board for us to even talk about, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, public comments. You had three minutes. Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Okay, there being no one else, public comments is now closed. Move on to the policy agenda.
You ready? All ready?
I'm approving zoning map amendment from RE residential estate to neighborhood business for the property at 13181 Reese Bergeron Road.
Okay. Thank you. This, move it. It's already been moved. It's the second reading. As you know, I know Mr. Hinden made some comments. I don't know if there's any other questions. If there are, I'll refer them to Mr. Creel. I have no further questions. I've been satisfied that there is no significant opposition to this. Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. I've not received any calls or anything either. And the fact that they're moving to serve more patients tells us something here on the coast. That's my only comment. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Barrett? Anything? Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence? Anything? Any questions on this ordinance?
I was gonna make a couple of statements. You know, the way they put this thing on the agenda is unbelievable. When you read what these people have done, it's amazing. I mean, the way they put it in, like some kind of alcohol, but I mean, if you look at their building and what they've done, that thing's high-end. And that thing is well-done. And I think somehow or another, it should have been stated a little bit better than it was written as an agenda this way. Because what they're doing is a great job. And I'll tell you what, I don't know what they're planning on putting just offices in the church, but I mean, the stuff that they've done with the other building, I mean, that's a high-end, fine-looking thing.
Director, you have any comments that would be beneficial?
Just when the original rehab center moved into the location right next to Highway Sixty-Seven, there were some citizens that came in that were concerned about what might happen. We have not had a single complaint about the rehab center. And in answer to Mr. Lawrence's question, what they're proposing in this former church, they'll have five rooms in there for patients, and then they'll also have an extension of their office from the main building. So they run a very good operation. We've not had any problems.
Okay. Thank you, Director. There being no other comments, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Six, six-zero. Demming out of the room. Move on to the resolutions. Item B.
Resolution granting contentional use to authorize a former church to be utilized, an extension of a drug and alcohol treatment facility for property located at 13181 Reese Bergeron Road.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All right. Have no other questions? Mr. Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Anyone else? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Demming out of the room. Move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor, when you finally get the air conditioner put in the ball field, it says replacement. These are, they repaying those or they putting in new ones?
This is for the green, talking about the one for the Sanger, yeah. This is for the green room, not part of the Sanger itself.
I mean, this whole ball field concession stand, the air conditioner-
Item D. Item D, A.J. Holloway Sports Box.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking, yeah.
Yeah, I know that stuff we've been trying to get done. I said, are they using sort of replacement or they new? They're both of them new units? So both, okay, that's why I want to make sure. Because it definitely needed, that's for sure. On K, you're talking about the Point Cadet Development, K? You put fund?
We're just transferring the remainder into our budget.
Say again?
Transferring the remainder of the funds into our budget.
Could you explain exactly what's happening with the bridge? Is the bridge done? We finished, we paid everything out with the collisions and everything on the bridge? That'd be M, N. I mean, is that resolved, done?
I think Rachel can explain both of the, all three of those, as far as closing those projects related to the collision, right?
Speaker's in the mic so they can record you there. Rachel, please.
All work is complete from the strike from the Ms. Laurie. It's been complete for quite some time. We've resolved any matter and we've received the money from the insurance company. We're just recognizing that into the budget, repaying the Economic Development Security Fund, which lent the capital project the money to do the repairs.
So that's the whole thing done?
It's in closing. It's done after this.
Thanks, Rachel.
And on, oh, we finished the traffic study on O?
Yeah.
We have a report on what they actually come up with?
I'm not sure. Mike would probably know where it is, but we'll provide that as far as the traffic study, I think.
He said it was finished, so I just wanted, we all want to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, on item G, that's the street sweeping contract, Mr. Mayor. We had talked, and that's, they're adding a provision that adds a fuel charge based on the current prices of fuel. And I know that we've had this contract for several years, almost, I think, almost, almost four years. And I can't, I don't know if we budget, is it twenty-five thousand a year? You may not know. I don't-
Twenty-five on street sweeping a year annually?
Yeah. Yeah, and as I said, in order to sweep more frequently in more streets, it's something we probably need to look at in budget time. On item H, on the city's webpage, they note which, in Parks and Recreation, which facilities are available to rent, but we don't have any rates. I'm just thinking it might be a good idea to put rates out there so that, in all the inclusive charges that may apply. That's just my thinking, because if I was interested in the civic center, I'd like to know what it's going to cost me, you know, and if there are additional things. So that's all, just an observation. On item O, George Lawrence just referred to it. That's the Point Cadet traffic study. I'd love to get a copy of that in PDF format to put on my website. On item P, on the city prosecutor, we, I see that Stephen Eckert is leaving us and we're approving Patrick Williams. And I know that we have another city prosecutor as well, Robert Horensky, I believe. And I noticed that he works on community courts. So in addition to municipal court, he's always, always present for community court. And I don't know if they're paid anymore for that, but I would certainly think if they're working more, they should be paid a little more for that. I don't, I don't know. But if Mr. Williams might fill in for Mr. Horensky if he's on vacation or ill or whatever, it's just, they ought to be compensated for that, I think. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
I have nothing.
Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? And I have none. Any exceptions to the consent agenda? Mr. Lawrence, you have any exceptions? Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
No, sir.
Mr. Barrett?
None.
I have none. All in favor of the consent agenda? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Move on to code enforcement.
Item A, KFP Investments LLC. This is 168 St. Paul Street, and the property is still in violation. Is that north of the line or south of the line? Do you know? I believe this is north of the line.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of KFP Investments? Anyone? There being no one, this case is closed. Move on to the next item B.
Item B, Linda K. Easton Torres, 2123 Floyd Drive. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Linda K. Easton Torres? Okay. You'd state your name, please, and-
Jerry Quinn. I'm the renter at the property.
You rent the property? You don't own the property. You rent it?
No, she lives in Dallas, Texas. I'm in here on her behalf.
So any pictures, pictures of, Mr. Creel, are these pictures recent or?
The pictures that we always present to the city council are taken the day before.
Okay.
Those pictures were taken yesterday.
Okay.
It does appear, it does appear that he's made some progress. I would ask for a thirty-day extension.
All right. All right. Thank you. There's a motion to move for thirty days by Mr. Guines. Is there a second? Mr. Lawrence has seconded it. Any discussion, further discussion? State your last name again so we have it for the record.
Prim Kee, I N N.
Okay. And just for the record, Mr. Creel added that there's been some improvement and he suggested that we give an extension, which we have. So there's a motion on the floor. There's no other discussion. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the next item C. Thank you, sir. Item C. You got another one?
Wake up.
All right.
The last-
Come on, you're on the clock. You're on the clock.
The Thomas D. Kohler, 234 Baker Street, that case has been resolved.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Code enforcement hearing is now closed. Routine agenda, have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Mr. Lawrence?
Let Wal give us a good report here.
Good afternoon, council. So we've got the, thank you, sir. We have, we don't have the 2.15 million yet into the system with MEMA. I've sent a message out to them and they said it should be in there this week. That'll start the process rolling. So probably by the first meeting in August or the second meeting in August, we'll have that 2.15 million from MEMA.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I want to bring up one other thing. I know on our payment schedule, we have Gerald Bussell. We paying him money. Man, I just, I just have him removed from the city of Biloxi after six months of P O D fighting with him. I don't think we ought to be paying him anything. I know he probably did something for you, but that's just my opinion. So every time it comes up, I'm gonna bring it up. I'm gonna vote against that, paying him anything. I'm not gonna sit there and pay somebody and beat up the city of Biloxi for six months. It don't work that way. So I just want to bring it up to you now.
These are the transactions. I think that we all okay these contracts and his representation is, you know, is represented by contract.
He paid the bills, so I ain't paying for that one.
Is that it? Anybody else have anything? Routine? Okay, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Chair entertain a motion to recess? All right. Moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll recess, take a ten-minute break, and then we'll start our special meeting for the budget purposes.